Hey, Michelle.
How are you?
Excellent. Just trying to download everything. That, um, that meeting today was two hours. My head is like spinning. No, that's all right. I'm just, I seem a little frazzled.
Yeah. Yeah. I can imagine. It's too hard. The long meetings are tough enough. Like, never mind when the content is difficult, too. You know? Always trying to get ahead of typing. Florida.
It was good. You guys went to Disney last year, right?
In April.
And yeah, in the spring. It's just, it's so busy. You know what I mean? It's like, it's just exhausting. You know, I thought, you know, there's like those crazy Disney people who go, you know, every year, more than once a year. I was like, maybe I'll go there and I'll like get some of that magic. The whole time Alan and I kept looking each other whenever coming back here. Like, I mean, we're glad we did it. The kids obviously had a great time, but like, that's not my idea of the most magical place on earth. Like, the most magical place on earth is somewhere that you can like go on the beach and go scuba diving and snorkeling. Like, not stand in line for 90 minutes for a two-minute, like, you know, amusement ride. I don't know.
I'm with you. I just, I went into it just looking at it like, we were gonna be in line.
Oh, yeah.
You know, like, because it is. But, I mean, the kids did have a lot of fun and, you know, they're like, when are we going back? I'm like,
Oh, really?
We're on like a diving vacation before we go.
Yeah.
And then we come. I'm like, I don't know yet. I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, the kids were really, like, we totally knew, obviously, that we were gonna be in line for forever. But, um, the kids were really actually very good about it, so.
Yeah.
Which I was surprised by. There was, I mean, there was some whining, like, expected amount of whining, but
Yeah.
they're really good, so.
Good. That's good. That makes it easier.
Yeah. Like, when we had those long lines, um, we went to, um, we did Avatar. What parks did you guys go to?
We went to every park.
Oh, wow. Yeah. We didn't go to Epcot.
Oh.
It was your favorite park? Epcot was your favorite?
Well, Epcot was good for, like, grownups. Like, and, you know, we would do, because we went for, geez, did we go for 10 days? 12 days? I don't remember, but, um, we did like a half a day. We did Epcot for a full day, but it was nice because we just, we went, we ate. Um, we just like sampled everything. Um, and there were some rides for the kids, but I was, I loved Epcot. The food was great. It was fun just to walk around and, but I loved Animal Kingdom.
Oh, yeah. Animal Kingdom was fun. And it was a good, it was a good first part for us because it was, you know, there was like less chaos, you know? Um, so it was a good starter part. That was the first one I went to on Sunday. Um, but like, when we see an Avatar is like such a long, long wait. And so, like, oh, we'll get the kids some snacks and then we can stay in line. So then we get up to the line and Mason has like a frozen lemonade thing and the kids all have, you know, popcorn, whatever. The guy's like, you can't eat that in there because it's all inside of those caves.
I, yeah.
So, that sort of blew that plan. Hey, Patty.
Hi, Tina. How are you, Michelle?
I was just talking about, we just got back, our family just got back from Florida and it's intense. We went to the parks, you know?
Oh, wow. Good for you.
Yeah. I was just saying, I'm not one of those feel the magic kind of people. It was like, it was good that we went, but it'll be a little while before we go back.
Did you get the Star Wars ride?
We did, yeah. There was sometimes, um, you couldn't sign up for Lightning Lane on the day that we went at all, all day long. And there were some times that it was, the wait was, um, three hours, up to three hours. Um, but then my, my, so I'm not big into Star Wars, but Alan's brother-in-law is really into Star Wars and his nephew is also. And, um, so he was like stalking the lines and it went down to like, maybe, you know, 60 or 70 minutes at one point, and we like ran across the park to get in line. We ended up waiting for 90 minutes, but, you know.
Yeah. That was a fun one. The kids are like, so.
It was intense, yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was cool.
I have to say Avatar was probably my favorite. That was amazing.
Love that ride. So awesome.
Hi, Lauren. Oh, there's Beth. All right. Everyone.
Welcome back.
Hi, Kevin.
Hi, Kevin. Tony.
Beth.
Good, everybody.
I think I can let everybody in. We can start the meeting. Sound good? Hi, Beth.
Hi.
Great. Let me disable the waiting room. All right, I will call the meeting of November 16, 2021 to order. If we could all stand and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance
to the United States of America and to the republic which is
one nation under God
and indivisible, with liberty and justice
Welcome, everyone. Um, if we could start by reviewing the minutes from October 26. Anyone from the committee has any feedback, or if not, if we can have a motion to approve the minutes?
And we have to approve the minutes from the last school committee meeting?
I second. Was that Patty?
Yes, that was me. I seconded that motion.
Thank you. All in favor, and I think Lauren, are you abstaining from this?
That's correct.
Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes as written, Ms. Paris, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Emma, myself, and Ms. Sherlock abstain. Um, Mr. Parentazzi, could you go over the bill roll from tonight, please?
Madam Chair, thank you very much. I just want to remind the members of the school committee, I know how busy you are. If you haven't had time, I did send a, an updated full packet so you didn't have to go to five different places because several things changed. Uh, one of them is the bill rolls. The new amount is $74,277.57. The, uh, there are a lot of typical bills. Uh, there are special education, uh, bills from Marblehead, from North Shore Educational Consortium, uh, from, um, Landmark. Uh, there's a bill for, uh, seaside pizza for our lunches. And then I do, as I always want to do, is I want to highlight any, um, payment that would be, um, to any of our staff. Uh, once again, we have two things going on. One is that we are in a process of finalizing our application with the state, uh, elementary, um, early education department for being able to, qualify for vouchers. And, uh, that process requires a full vetting of any staff that deals with the preschool program, uh, including myself. And that, that starts with, uh, being re-fingerprinted. The fingerprints are $35 per person and, uh, we, of course, would reimburse the staff. So there's two of those. Then, uh, the district does not own nor have control of and/or use of a credit card. So a lot of companies now require, uh, us to go online and purchase things and use a credit card. So you have, uh, Mr. Andrews being reimbursed for $63.75 for using his personal credit card. And Christine Katzos being reimbursed, uh, three times, uh, $53.13, $45, and $45 for the use of her credit card. Um, and everything else is, is pretty, pretty standard. And, Madam Chair, with your permission, I would recommend that a school committee member makes a motion to approve $74,277.57 for the bills dated 11/16/21.
I'll make a motion to approve $74,277.57 of bills dated November 16 of 2021.
I'll second the motion made by Ms. Katzos.
Um, any discussion? All in favor of approving the bill roll as written, Ms. Karis, Ms. Sherlock, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Emma, myself? The motion carries. Uh, Mr. Parentazzi, do you want to move on and go over, I know you have the COVID-19 update?
Madam Chair, I would be happy to. Lots of, uh, pretty, pretty interesting and good news. The first thing I want to bring to your attention is, in the packet, you have a, um, multi-page document from, uh, Murphy, Hesse, Toomey, and Lehane, who are, uh, attorneys specializing in public, uh, sector. Uh, this simply details for you something that does not pertain to us, but is a guideline that may be used by employers. Uh, OSHA has issued an emergency, emergency temporary standard, which requires a vaccine mandate policy with an exception for weekly testing. And there are, uh, critical dates in this. Uh, it does only apply to private employers where, with 100 or more employees, but I think it's, uh, interesting to note that OSHA is recommending that, uh, within the next several weeks, employers with, uh, employee, uh, numbers of 100 or more either require, um, vaccination or testing. So that was just for your information, and I think it is, it is quite the leap from where we were a few weeks ago. Um, once again, that does not pertain to us. Massachusetts is not an OSHA state, but our guidelines under the State Employment Act are very similar to OSHA, but the state has not come out with this kind of a mandate, although, uh, several communities and several types of employees are having vaccination mandated at this time. And as you know from the news, there are some court cases involved. So the best news is, today I sent you a, uh, flyer. Uh, as of Tuesday, November 30th, 3:00 to, 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Town Hall, we are, uh, going to host a vaccination for children five years old and older. Now, I've heard from a couple of nurses in the community that, uh, this weekend, um, pediatricians were kind of flooded with vaccinations, uh, requests, and that's good. Uh, obviously, the more people we can get vaccinated, the, the greater the chance that we can keep our school open. So we're happy about that. I want to thank Cheryl Delicio, who did the lead on this. Uh, she contacted the DESE, who gave her Cataldo ambulance. Uh, it was, it's interesting that I had a communication, uh, from Cataldo that they have already vaccinated, uh, millions of, of individuals. Actually, let me put it this way. They've administered millions of vaccination doses, so they're expert at it. So they will be handling the actual vaccination. It will take place, the first dose would be November 30th, 3:00 to 8:00 PM. The second dose would be December 21st, 3:00 to 8:00 PM. The reason we're, I'm so excited as superintendent is that means that all of our students have the ability to get a very convenient vaccination, if parents so choose, and then be fully immunized by the beginning of the school in January. And I think that's, that's a terrific thing for us.
That's great. Thank you to Cheryl for, um, taking the initiative. Just so much, I mean, speaking as a parent, um, I know it's been really tricky for some people to find, uh, space and convenient time to, uh, get their children vaccinated. So it's great that they have hours that are after regular work hours for families that want to have their child vaccinated and right in town. So, thank you to Cheryl.
So, uh, the flyer that we, uh, will be sending, uh, don't think it went out yet, but it's, it's going out very, very soon. Is it out?
Yeah.
Great. We have both the QR code to make it convenient for parents and, of course, the, the link. Um, it's very important for parents, and that's why we highlighted it right under the title. Online registration is an absolute requirement. There are no walk-ins. Okay? Uh, so, Nahant continues to do phenomenally well in terms of COVID cases. As of today, we have had seven cases in November in the community. Uh, we did have one case of, of a student at these, uh, Johnson Elementary School. That, uh, communication was not at the school. It was outside the school. That student returned, uh, to school yesterday. Um, there is another member of that student's family who has tested positive, but is now in quarantine. And, um, again, no communication that we know of at Johnson Elementary School, either staff or students. Uh, the Public Health Department is confident that the vast percentage of cases, both in October and the October data, is that we had, um, 11 cases this October as compared to 30 a year ago in October. So again, trending in the right way, in the right direction. Uh, the vast percentage of cases that we are seeing are with 20-something-year-olds uh, or very late teens, many of whom list Nahant as their residence, but are temporarily out of Nahant, mostly at colleges, universities, or working. So, uh, once again, all good news.
Uh, Mr. Parentazzi, I think Ms. Anderson has a question.
Um, yes, thank you. I was wondering whether we were doing any, um, information campaigns around the vaccine and the safety of the vaccine with parents. Um, prior to the, um, the vaccination clinic, which is a fabulous thing. I've been asked by about three different parents in, um, in our community of Nahant and about 200, outside of Nott, whether I think that, um, whether I am going to get my own kids vaccinated, can't wait. And, um, whether I feel like it's safe. So if people are asking me, me, as a schoolperson, then I can imagine that they might want to be asking their schools and especially our, our school nurse. So I just wanted to see what you thought about all that, you and Mr. Andrews.
Uh, Madam Chair, through you. Uh, thank you for that information, Ms. Anderson. I will communicate that to the Public Health Department and ask them for a statement. Uh, I am uncomfortable about giving one as a, as a non-professional in the field. Uh, obviously, the, um, electronic media is full of opinions of ranging from, you have, you have to be vaccinated, everybody should be vaccinated, to nobody should be vaccinated. Uh, so I will communicate, uh, with Deb, uh, as soon as this meeting's over, and I will ask her for some links to, uh, credible information. Anyone can go on the DPH or the DESE and get tons of information. Um, maybe it's good that it's word of mouth and, you know, that people are asking members of the school committee for their personal opinions because they respect you, uh, and, um, highly regard your opinion. But once again, I think the school, my job as superintendent is to make sure the school has, uh, limited exposure in a variety of ways. And I would hesitate to have anyone who worked for you as a school committee give medical opinions that could, in even if it's an infinitesimal chance, turn out to be, um, an issue that could cause some liability. Uh, but the Public Health Department, that's their, you know, that's their expertise. So with your permission, um, as a school committee, I'll ask for, for some, uh, links to some information or an opinion, if they have one.
I wouldn't venture to say the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Medical Association, and, uh, CDC. Um, you know, every public health organization and multiple other organizations who advocate for health and safety and, um, are in charge officially of giving us advice on such issues, advocate for, uh, for receipt of the vaccine and, um, document the safety. Um, and certainly the, the risk benefit ratio. So I think also, for any parents who are concerned out there contacting their pediatrician would be a great way to go, um, so that any individual, um, particular, you know, aspects of their child's health could be addressed. You know, if there are any, you know, allergies that they may have, that they may have concerns about, it'd be good to review them with their pediatrician. Um, but I would encourage everyone to avoid social media and go to, um, you know, sites that are peer-reviewed and, uh, respected in the medical community to get their information on such matters. And I will say, just anecdotally, although it's personal, um, you know, my 12-year-old got vaccinated as soon as she could, and she was so, so proud. And my nine-year-old got his first shot, uh, last week and was so excited. So we're thrilled. I feel so lucky to have the ability to, to get the kids vaccinated so quickly.
Yeah, I, um, just to clarify, um, uh, Tony, I, as, uh, the Nahant parents that approached me, really just approached me as a mom that they know.
Yeah.
Not as a school committee member at all, and not even, I don't even know if they know my job outside of Nott. So, um, it was the, the stu-, the parents of the students in the school system that I serve professionally. You know, they have asked me as a schoolperson, and I've cited the sources that, um, Ms. Sherlock just mentioned, and, um, and so I'm kind of like, if the CDC and doctors feel like this is safe, this is where we're going, and, um, and I think Nahant is actually saying that by having a vaccination clinic, which is a good thing, you know, just implicitly. What I think is just, if, you know, like, the parent from Nahant, you know, putting my own professional associations aside. The parent from Nahant is in kind of a little bit of a, a tough place with her husband because her husband, it doesn't want to get vaccinated, find his choice. That, you know, but doesn't want the child to get vaccinated, and she very much wants her child to get vaccinated. And so she asked me as a mom, you know, how strongly I felt, you know? And I, I will say, I am on the left-hand side of that scale. I'm zealous about this. And, um, I, um, I think it is, I think it is important to put that information out there so at least the parents can access it to make their own choice. We can't tell parents what to do, but we certainly can like, you know, put out what we know as educated people. They can make their choice, and it would also give them something to bring home if there was a discussion in the family about vaccination, which I imagine there, I know there, there are discussions like that. And so that was where my comment came from.
Yeah.
I appreciate what you're saying, Ms. Anderson, and I think, um, although I also appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Parentazzi, about just being careful with what a school advises as opposed to, um, you people as individuals. But providing links like you, uh, referenced earlier and making those links available in the newsletter or in a separate email, um, so that it's linked to data, to data sources and articles that are, again, um, you know, written by professionals in this particular matter, I think would be great. Um, it doesn't give a personal statement, you know, on the part of the school, but it provides people with, um, with safe sites to check for information.
Yeah, and, um, Madam Chair, through you, I think it's also important to understand that, um, we are providing the Nahant Vaccine Clinic to children five years old and above, to any resident, not just our own students. And that we're making it available, not telling people that they have to or should have their children vaccinated. That's a personal opinion that, uh, everyone has to make. But, uh, I'll, I will ask, uh, both our own, uh, school nurse and the public health nurse to, uh, resend some of the links that we sent, have been sending over and over again. Sometimes it gets repetitious and, you know, we just skip over the blue part. And, uh, we'll, we'll kind of highlight it because that, I think that's important.
Yeah, at this moment, with the clinic coming up, it seems like it pertains. Some people may be looking for it again. It's great.
And then, Madam Chair, another bit of good news. Um, as of yesterday, CIC Health, who is the state-supported contractor, uh, with both DESE, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and Department of Public Health, has sent us two testers to assist with school-related COVID-19 testing. They are contracted, uh, at no cost to the taxpayers in Nahant to assist us with anything COVID test-related, which it is, which can, which includes, but is not limited to symptomatic testing of students and staff, the testing for the test and stay program, contract, contact tracing, parent guardian communication, follow-up regarding any testing or symptoms, and coordination with the school nurse regarding any COVID-19-related testing, attendance, or symptom surveillance. We are thrilled to have this. Uh, I signed up for this about five, six weeks ago. Um, and, um, it took a while for the state to come down the list to Little Ol' Nahant, but they're here. So we have, uh, two staff members, uh, from CIC Health of in-room 209. And, uh, they have that space so that they can keep multiple students, if they have to, uh, test multiple students uh, while the test, uh, is running. Um, that's not the appropriate word, while it's percolating. Uh, it's about 15 or 20 minutes, and, uh, so that the students can stay in, uh, in isolation. Uh, and they will, they provide all of the materiel. Uh, so it's really a benefit to our students, our staff. Um, they have already done, uh, all of their background checks and core checks, and, uh, documentation is on file. So, once again, we're very thrilled to have that giant step being taken to keep our students and staff, uh, in school and safe.
Thank you.
And they're at the school five days a week?
Yeah, it seems like a lot.
Yes, they are.
I mean, I'm sure it's a huge help for Mrs. Delicia, which seems like. A lot of staff or little volume, I, I hope little volume.
Well, we, we had that conversation, excuse me, we had that conversation today. And from the view of um, Malden from the DESE. An elementary school is an elementary school is an elementary school.
Oh geez, alright.
So if we had a thousand students, we would have two CIC staff.
Oh boy, okay, well, we're happy to have them.
Yeah, I, I'm not going to say no, yeah. Once again, I think the critical thing for the uh, the community and the school committee members. To note is that this is all uh, Federal Recovery Act money. Ultimately, you know, coming through the state. So it uh, there are no expenses to uh. The taxpayer, the taxpayers in the beautiful community of Nahant.
Alright.
So Madam Chair, let, if I may, I'll go to 4B, the Solar Energy LED Projects. Today I found out the National Grid wants a full study done before they will make a decision about solar energy. Uh, array on the Johnson Elementary School. Basically, they are concerned that their relay station. Their transfer station, which basically at this point is a one-way. Station for electricity. And if we put up a lot of solar energy arrays, then it has to become a two-way station. Uh, they're not sure they can, um, this, the um. Station can cover the um. Number of. The amount of electricity that could be going through it. So they are in, uh, they are demanding, uh, asking for about nine thousand seven hundred hours to do a study. So um. Mr. Barret and I spoke about it today and we're figuring out what to do about that. So right now the solar is on hold. We will be contacting our consultant, Solet, and talking to them about um, what to do. The LED Projects has a very different kind of a report. Today, for the first time. Uh, two gentlemen, Ty and Eric. Showed up from BE retrofit. They are a subcontractor of our LED contractor, Energy Source. And they are at the present time uh, improving the temperature weatherization. At a Johnson Elementary School in a variety of ways. They're putting extra insulation around the uh, extr-, exterior of the building on both floors. They are putting improved weather stripping on all of our doors. They are sealing where the wall and the uh, roof meet, they are putting foam sealant in. And that will go on for some time. All of that work is being done starting at um. Approximately three PM every day, so that it does not interfere with um. Obviously, the, the student learning. So we're really thrilled to have that begin. Uh, Madam Chair, I'll go on. Uh, in your packet, you have a uh. An Excel spreadsheet that shows you uh, the first draft of the two thousand twenty-three budget. I want to caution members of the school committee. In terms of what that budget means. It's simply a mathematical rotation of our current budget. By a percentage increase, the total increase is one hundred and six thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars. There are tremendous unknowns at this time. Uh, number one, we don't know what our revenue is from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or the federal government at this time. Other than the grants that we've already been uh, approved for. Two, we don't know um, a lot about uh, our special education costs. Uh, we know the cost of our current students, obviously, what grade they are, what age they are. Uh, however, that's a, a pretty significant unknown at this time of the year. Uh, since we haven't even had our first report card yet. Uh, students have not been referred to the child study team as of yet, um, new students. Uh, new being newly recommended students. Uh, and therefore there is a possibility that we would have some special education costs. For fiscal twenty-three that we don't know of yet. Three, uh, we do not have um. Negotiated agreements for September first, two thousand twenty-two. With either Unit A or Unit B of the Nahant Teachers Association. So with all of those unknowns that could provide significant cost. Uh, once again, I want to caution the school committee that this is simply a starting point. It could, the budget need could go up and it could go down. Uh, but you know, I will continue from now until our presentation. Uh, at the budget hearing where the school committee will be asked to make a final determination following that hearing. Uh, I will be fine-tuning the budget. Based on a variety of factors, including those I just mentioned. Madam Chair, through you, do any school committee members have any uh, questions? Not that I.
So at this point, we're not really discussing this.
Questions.
At this point, we're not really discussing this much, just having it for our information is my understanding.
Yes, the far-right column, bottom line is a hundred and six thousand one hundred, one hundred and forty-eight dollars. Over the current budget.
Mm-hmm.
At this point, that's all I can say.
Okay.
Uh. Madam Chair, the uh, 4D is a policy matter that I defer to you.
Um, we discussed this at the last meeting. Sorry, I'm just going to scroll down to it. Um. I don't see it. Um. Sorry, I don't see it in our packet.
I don't see it either, Madam Chair. I recommend it. I, I recommend we table this and I apologize.
No, that's okay. I can look back at last um, the meeting information packet from, yeah. It's in our last meeting's information packet. I can read it from there.
Yeah, it is a very short policy. It is uh, basically ident-, uh, establishing the substitute pay rate at, at least eighty-five dollars and. Uh, authorizing the superintendent to. Offer substitutes. Up to the daily rate of a first-year bachelor's teacher, if necessary. To uh, find appropriate substitutes that we need.
I can read it. Um, and if, do you want me to forward this to the rest of the school committee members to read it along? I can forward that actually, I'll forward it right now.
Yeah, that would be wonderful if you share your screen. You're way above my.
Yeah, great. Yeah, let me just scroll down to it.
Madam Chair, while you're doing that, for the school committee's benefit, a really good concrete example of the need for this policy would be a, a school nurse. I cannot get a school nurse for um, eighty-five dollars a day.
Can everybody see this on the screen? Okay. Um, so. The old policy was that uh, the daily rate for the substitute was sixty-five dollars. And the extended term substitute rate of pay was seventy-five dollars a day. Um, effective on the twenty-first consecutive day in the same assignment. And the new proposal is the daily rate for a substitute is a minimum eighty-five dollars. And the substitute rate of pay may be increased at the discretion of the superintendent. But may not exceed the daily rate of a full-time B-step-one teacher.
Yeah, B is bachelor's degree education.
And I know Ms. Sherlock wasn't at the last meeting when we discussed that. Um, do any school committee members have any? Uh, discussion or questions, feedback?
It seems quite reasonable.
Seems like a reasonable increase. Um, so we can vote upon this today if uh, any of the school committee members would like to make a motion to. Approve the GCTR substitute pay policy.
I'll make a motion to approve the GCGR substitute pay policy.
I'll second the motion made by Ms. Karras.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Um, all in favor, by a show of hands. Ms. Karras, Mr. Sherlock, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Sam, and myself, motion carries.
Madam Chair, thank you very much for your technological expertise and once again, I apologize for that not being in the packet. I thought it was.
Um, and then the last uh. Under old business is the preschool program, EEC vouchers.
Yes, it's uh, once again, good news. Um. We have jumped through all the state and federal hoops. Uh, and we are ready to move forward. I, uh, on Thursday I will be uh, speaking with the. Uh, state coordinator who is, is handles this area of the state. Um, each of the members of the preschool program receive their uh, fingerprint authorization. And uh, it's called a suitability determination. Um, today, actually, the last ones came in, so we will be moving forward with uh, preschool vouchers. What that means is that if individuals have an income below a threshold. The state actually um, vouchers their students for preschool. So that the amount of income somebody has or lack of income. Does not deter uh, students from getting appropriate preschool education. Uh, it's been a long haul. We've, I've been doing this since August. But we're right at the end of the, the pathway now.
Tony, are the vouchers on a sliding scale? How does that work?
Uh, it is, there is an initial threshold. And um, we actually have always had a scale where if um. If a parent or guardian in Nahant had an income that qualified for free and reduced lunch. Their tuition would be fifty percent of the, of the full tuition. So this takes that next step that takes all of the tuition off the table. Uh, and there are both thresholds and sliding.
That's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for taking that initiative. Um, moving on to your report, uh, Mr. Parentazi. Do you think it would be appropriate to go a little out of order? Because I see Ms. DeGuardia is on the call and maybe you could allow her to give. That's all right with you.
That'd be wonderful, Madam Chair. I'm sure uh, Mary was enthralled with our previous conversations. Being a, a veteran of many school committee mem-, uh, meetings elsewhere.
Um. Mr. Party, I can make you a host if you'd like to uh, share your screen for the presentation.
Okay. First of all, I wanted to thank you for, for having me tonight. Um, and in my exuberance to share every last tidbit of special ed in Nahant with you. I'm afraid my PowerPoint kind of exploded. So I won't keep you here till midnight and I'll zoom through some of them and um. You can stop me if you have questions or you could email or call me uh, in the future. So, yeah, I'll go ahead and share my screen. There it is. Okay, um, so this is about special education uh, in Nahant. And um, the way I approached it was to look at the strategic plan and talk to people about uh, their goals. Uh, for the Johnson School and Nahant in particular. Um, and I wanted you to know how the special ed department was contributing uh, to those goals to, to make them achievable. Um, little bit about uh, our students at this time. Uh, and this changes, it might have changed today again. Uh, there's about thirty-nine to forty students um, at the Johnson uh, who. Receives special education services who were found eligible. And you can see uh, from pre-K to grade six. Um, I think you might question grade one, uh, there's eleven students and that's. Really because of our um, child find activities in the past where. Students through early screening, uh, kindergarten screening, uh, early intervention. Uh, that's why that number uh, is uh, higher than the others. Moving on, um, you know that the Johnson School ends at grade six, so our students go on to the Swamp Scott Public Schools. And you can see the breakdown here uh, of how many students. Um, the elementary school students, you might wonder, why aren't they at Johnson? It's because they have um, been found to have special needs that. Um, their least restrictive environment is a more uh, suitable placement at Swamp Scott. That will uh, address their special needs. Okay, uh, we have four out-of-district students. Uh, what that means is that there's four students. Uh, for special education students who were found to have uh, disabilities. Uh, so severe that they needed a specialized placement, um, usually a day placement. And we are looking at those students and as our annual reviews and reevaluations come up. We're going to uh, see what their least restrictive environment is at this point and we'd love to bring students back um, to the Johnson. As I said before, I looked at the strategic plan, uh, trying to maximize student achievement. Uh, we found that our testing materials, some of them uh, were outdated. And so my first effort was to get assessment. Uh, protocols that, that were up to date and that would address the needs of our students. Uh, and also that we only use research-based interventions. What that means, um, there's many FADs out there uh, for different disabilities. Uh, autism i- is a big one that there's a lot of FAD treatments. And we only use research-based, uh, meaning we use applied behavior analysis. Uh, we use behavior plans and uh, functional behavioral assessments to assess. The needs uh, of our students. Uh, we've been doing a lot of professional development for staff. Uh, given uh, the pandemic, a lot of mandatory um. Professional development for us, for our staff uh, didn't take place last year. An example of that is the um, safety training that every two years uh, staff must be. Uh, have the safety training. And so we found that we had so many people that needed it that uh, we should have our own trainer and so. Uh, with Tony's blessing, uh, our school adjustment counselor became. A, a trained trainer for safety care and she's gone about um. Training the staff and that's, it's a two-day training, so we've uh, had to break it up a little bit. Uh, to provide um, substitutes to cover for staff. We've used the PD day on November first. Uh, and we'll use future PD uh, to get all our staff safety trained. Um, and it's. It's important that, to note that this isn't safety train, it used to be called restraint training. That, you know, we try to avoid that at all costs. We're really talking about uh, how to de-escalate students. Uh, so that we don't reach that other place. We have weekly staff meetings for special ed staff. Uh, the law timelines, trying to uh, make those uh. Compliant at the Johnson School with the pandemic. Uh, they had run behind uh, several months or the year. Um, and we've been cleaning those up and as of. And as of October 26th, I think it was, we're up to date with our student assessment and annual reviews evaluations. Some of the other professional development that we've undertaken, two of our staff members are doing Orton-Gillingham training. That's a year-long training. One is a special ed person, the, the general ed, and the other one is a general education teacher. So it's good to have that balance. This week, we're doing Linda Mood Bell. That's another research-based, based phonemic sequencing. Our speech therapist is going to do that all week long, which is great. I told you about the safety care training, paraprofessional training. Many of the pairs are also in the safety care training because they serve in classrooms with more higher need kids. And the other part of this paraprofessional training is, I'll be doing this with them with, in the new PD days. Things like confidentiality, behavior reinforcement for, for students. That's going to be happening very soon for the pairs. Use of technology. I'd like to take a harder look at the technology accommodations. Many of the technology that we have now has accommodations built in that we could have our students be taking advantage of to help them, whether it be reading or math or other subjects. So we're going to be looking at that harder. Providing apps for them. Software to level the playing field is what I always call it so that kids with disabilities can have access to the same materials and enrichment that other students without disabilities have. I didn't know this until I went into the strategic plan. I should have, as I go across that causeway on Tuesday mornings, the marine science that the school-wide academic focus is. And again, providing accommodations for students with disabilities so that they can access those materials and those activities that other students have access to. The public information, we'd, we'd like to have the Johnson School be right up there in the newspapers and in the community for the wonderful things that are happening there. One thing that we're going to be doing, we, we did it in September with the kindergarten screening. Every year, special ed is tasked with child find programming. And what that means is we need to go out in the community and find students, three, four, and five-year-olds, and provide a screening for them to see if they might need, if they might have a disability. And if we find that in the screening that that's true, then we then do a full evaluation and decide on if they need services.
For the child find, is that, do I take it that that's not just for students that are enrolled in the preschool program at the Johnson School? That would be anybody in the Nahant community?
That would be anybody in the Nahant community, as well as kids that may attend a parochial school or that may be homeschooled. We provide that to anybody. They'll read the notice, which I'll show you in a moment, and they can sign up. I think it's January 25th that we're going to be doing this all day at the Johnson School, inviting people to come in for the screening. There's also a woman that runs a program in Lynn, I have it right here, yeah, the Coordinated Family and Community Engagement Program. And she runs preschool groups at the Nahant Library twice a month for any Nahant student, parents that want to bring their kids. She says she could expand that if there was more interest. But that this notice will also go to her because she seems to have her finger on the pulse of the, the preschool population. Did that answer? Okay. Other things that happen right at the Johnson, multi-tiered systems of support. There's some student, most students who can get by or excel with the curriculum as is. Then there's that second tier who might need a little bit more support. And then there is the third tier of multi-tiered systems of support. And those are the kids in school that everybody knows their name, that need more than the average guy, or gal, in order to be successful at school. And Johnson does that. And this is just the flyer that we're going to be posting for the preschool training, screening. Making sure people know that it's free. That's always important to include. And that they can make an appointment by calling the school. Again, I already talked about the multi-tiered systems of support. I, I just want to add that it does, the MTSS process, even probably more than ever, is focusing on positive behavior interventions and supports. There's plenty of articles and DESI findings that kids during the pandemic really suffered in this area. And so we want to make sure that we are available to our students if they do need something more. Again, MTSS, it was, it was for the general ed population in the past. And now it's a process that includes special education kids who may not be getting all that they need in order to excel. And so a teacher can speak to the MTSS process for that. And also the student classroom assistance team at the Johnson is available to them as well. This is just more about MTSS that you can read at your leisure. If you have any questions, feel free to get back to me. Again, TSS. Okay, special ed services at the Johnson. There were, like I said, there was much, a great backlog of students from last year. But between September and October 26th, we ran more than 20 team meetings. And we're able to provide new services to students as a result. I want you to know that we follow the law. And the law says that within five days of a referral, a consent form is sent home to the parent or guardian to give their permission for the student to be tested. And I find that our special education staff is really good at chasing down those consents. They contact parents, they wait at dismissal with an extra copy in their hand. We like to get those consent forms signed. And from the moment they get signed, within 30 days, we complete the testing. And then within 15 days after that, there's a team meeting held to determine the eligibility of the student. Once we have a team meeting, an IEP is created if the student's found eligible. And within 10 days, the IEP goes home for the parent to sign so that services can begin. And services can include everything from a consultation by a specialist to inclusion services. We try to do as much inclusion, providing services right in the classroom as we can. Or it could include specialized services outside the classroom, perhaps with the speech therapist, the OT, or the special educator. And this is all reviewed annually with a student. And then every three years, the student is tested again to see if they're still eligible and what their needs are. This is just telling you who the team is at the, at the Johnson School. Paraprofessional staff, there's seven paraprofessionals who work with students in a variety of ways, as I've described there. This is something that I'm going to start working on come January. It's a transition to the upper grades. What I mean is that sixth grade is moving on to the Swamp Scott Schools. Is, these are just best practices for students in transition. I've found it to be very effective to have the the school adjustment counselor at the current school co-treat for at least one session with the new school adjustment counselor. It makes the parent, the students more familiar with staff. And it provides good information for students from a person who will be at the school they're going to be at. And I understand that in the past, there's been visits to the new school, and we'll certainly do that as well. Parent engagement is such an important feature because we depend on parents so much to provide, to carry on what we did during the day with homework and other activities with their kids. What I've found in the past, in my past placements, were that to have the parent fill out a survey when they leave a team meeting, it gives us a wealth of information on how we can improve the social, special education services at the school. And I think it's important to hear that from parents. So that, I almost had that all set to go, the survey. And we'll be doing that to inform parents about the availability of those preschool play groups. The coordinator from Lynn comes to the Johnson School once a month and gives us flyers to, to pass out to parents to let them know the availability. And this is just, you know, my future vision, things that I'd like to work on to refine. Executive functioning needs of students, that was another place where DESI is focusing on, that, that is really a great need given the pandemic and what students didn't have during that time. Reading assessment, I talked about how we're providing the, the training for the staff, extended school year programming. I find that oftentimes, we leave that to the, close to the end of the year to decide on if a student needs summer school. And in special ed, students need summer school when they show regression throughout the school year. And so our staff is looking at students after every major break in, in the school year, like the December break, the February break, and to see, give some prodding of student skills right following that so that we can see those students that may suffer regression by having a whole summer off from their, their special education programming. So we're going to be looking at that. I think I've talked to you about most of those other things. And that's it. Where I got my information from, and I didn't say my head, but a lot of it was up there as well. If you have any questions, you can ask me now, or feel free to email me, call.
Thank you so much for sharing this. This was really a helpful overview. And it just seemed so robust, and I'm grateful that you came to talk to us. And I just want to acknowledge that, you know, in my job, I work with children with special needs, and I'm consistently hearing how much of a struggle it's been with the pandemic and, you know, keeping up with IEP meetings. And I, I just want to acknowledge what a huge accomplishment it is to catch up on all of the IEPs and annual reviews in the timeline that you've, that the team has done it in, and that's really fantastic. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now I'm going to try to stop sharing, and I hit it. Thank you.
I think you'll have to make me host again before, just before we forget. So you can click on the participants on my name. And then right-click. And it'll say, make host. Is that how I do it, Lauren? Yeah.
Make host, I see it.
Yeah. Do any other school committee members have any questions? Or Ms. Deguardia, while she's with us?
I have a question, Ms. Deguardia. Thank you so much. That was a wonderful presentation. 39 to 40 students is quite a few students, given the total enrollment at the Johnson School. And I'm wondering, are there any resources that you feel that you need to accommodate the needs of those students at this time? That you don't have?
Yeah. I think that we're in pretty good shape. Thank you for, for asking that. What, you're right, that is a high number of special needs students, the percentage, you know, for the school. And we're thinking Kevin Andrews has been great at the child study team, getting that going. And that, I'm thinking that if we provide services to those tier one and tier two students, they may not end up being special ed students. And so with Kevin's efforts, I think that we're going to see that number not increase as much as it has the trajectory of it anyway. Did you want to add anything to that, Kevin?
I'm sorry, Mary, can you say that last part again?
I was telling the group how the child study team, and how you're working with them to provide tier one and tier two support so the kids don't get referred to special ed.
Exactly. And yeah, I have that in my report, in fact, tonight, about reading groups that we're doing. And, and how we're looking at, you know, looking at supports that we have in place that we can really get students to where they, you know, really, we want them to be.
So thank you, Patty.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I found it so informative and helpful. Thank you so much for coming tonight and taking all of your time to inform us and educate us.
My pleasure. Thanks.
If there's no other questions or comments, Mr. Parentassi, you can move on with your facility update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, the facility's in really good shape. Everything is functioning. The only thing that you need to know is that our HVAC system at, on the roof that feeds the cafeteria is still, the repair is still not complete because we are waiting for material, which leads right into the next item. That's the most serious material delay we've had. We have caught up with the food service trays. We now have a stock of them. Unfortunately, we paid anywhere from 50% more to 100% more than we were paying, let's say, two years ago. But at least we have them. Later on, I will, I will talk to you about, well, Madam Chair, with your permission, I'll, I'll, I'll take the two material shortages and cost increases together. The item 5E is about the water filling stations that I promised you. I'm still going to promise you them. Unfortunately, we have to wait for them to either be delivered and/or manufactured and/or installed. And that, the contract is signed with Irvine and Sons. But obviously, we, we need to have the, the two items. They are going to be installed in the cafeteria where the water stations, there's two water fountains now. There are going to be one water bottle filling station and one combination water fountain, bottle filling station. And we're, we're, just have to wait. There's not too much we can do about it. And those costs a little bit higher, but not dramatically. Both of them are in the $7,500 range for materials, labor, everything, soup to nuts. So we're doing okay. I got three bids. The high bid was $10,800. And I just told you the low bid. And of course, it was someone we know. So it's good, a local company. Madam Chair, the next item is the November 1st Professional Development Day. And in your packet, I enclose the schedule that I want to thank all of our staff for participating. And I, of course, want to thank Mr. Andrews for organizing this. I want to zero in on the creating a trauma-sensitive learning environment. That was a Zoom presentation by the Massachusetts Partnerships for Youth. I zero in on that because a couple of school committee members over the last few months have asked what we're doing with MPY. This is the first thing we're doing. On January 18th, there will be two assemblies called What's Up Bullying? And the grades three to six will be at 11:00 AM and grades K to two will be at 1:00 PM. That is given by MPY. And then today, Mrs. DeGuardia and Mr. Andrews and I had a preliminary meeting about our January 14th Professional Development Day. And we came up with a short list of things that Mr. Andrews is going to research with MPY, with their education coordinator. And we will have more presentations on those days. What's missing from our repertoire right now is the parent guardian presentations that we had in the past. So we'll be working on that. Unless things change dramatically in the next few weeks, those would be remote. So I did want to mention that to you. So we are, we are back on our path with the Massachusetts Partnerships for Youth. And as you can tell by the array of activities on November 1st, professional development is healthy in the Johnson Elementary School.
Thank you. Mr. Andrews, do you want to give the principals a report please? Oh, you're on mute.
I'd be happy to, Madam Chair. Thank you. So I want to talk about a couple of different areas tonight. Teaching and learning and some events that are coming up. In the area of teaching and learning, we've been getting outside in the community garden. And I think one thing we've really realized in this year is that it's really important to have enough adults on hand and be able to break the groups into smaller groups, classes into smaller groups of students. And so I've been joining teachers outside doing lessons on harvesting potatoes and then planting garlic. And garlic's great because you're going to plant it now and harvest it in the spring. So you'll have something already ready to go right when it starts. And so students are learning why plants have bulbs and how bulbs are like batteries storing energy over the winter. And we're also storing our potatoes over the winter and we're going to replant them in the spring and hopefully get more potatoes. Older students are collecting marigold flowers and they're going to be dyeing yarn for some art projects. Also in the area of teaching and learning is guided reading. As, as Mary DeGuardia pointed out, we are using the MTSS system. And so some students are getting small group work in addition to their classroom teacher, small group guided reading. And they're using books that are right at their level to challenge them. The important thing with teaching reading is to get that just write book that has scientifically devised words in it. And the student uses, you know, uses that book to practice and read and then steps up letter by letter through a series of levels until they're able to really get content from their books, hopefully by third grade. We really look at reading as a long-term project, learning to read for learning. In the area of events, Superintendent Parentazi covered the COVID testing onsite nicely and the other aspects of COVID-19. Thank you for taking care of those messages. And then I want to let you know that we had a great Veterans Day decorating event for the sixth graders. We did a bicycle and walking field trip over to the life-saving station. And I want to thank especially Mr. Robert Fields, who provided a wonderful description of how the site was used and the history of the life-saving station. And the sixth graders got to take part in something that, you know, we weren't able to do as much last year. And so that was wonderful. And I know that we got some good feedback from the veterans who enjoyed some appetizers courtesy of the students and Brett Henry, who provided them. And some great decorations. So thank you to everybody who helped me that, make that possible. We also had the run club race recently, and that took place out in Gannon Golf Course in Lynn. I want to thank all the parents who volunteered to be coaches for that team. And it's a really great chance for students to get outside and work together on something. And so thank you for making that possible. Wonderful event. And since I had a lot of fun. Upcoming events include the PTO Christmas tree sale. The PTO is looking for volunteers to help with the sale, which starts on November 26th. I encourage everybody to get their tree there. And if you'd like to sign up to help sell the trees, the link was in our previous newsletter and it will be running again in this current newsletter. And a reminder to everybody that Thanksgiving break begins on Wednesday, November 24th with 11:30 dismissal. And report cards will be going out that day. And this will be followed after the vacation holiday there by parent teacher conferences with evenings occurring from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Teachers will be sending out links for signup genius time slots to sign up for either the early dismissal on November 30th or December 1st, or else the evening on December 1st. And again, all these events are on our Google Calendar, which is programmed at the start of the school year. If you ever have a question or want to look ahead with more information. And I want to thank you for the time tonight. And I'd be happy to take any questions if there are any.
Mr. Andrews, did you say that the parent teacher conferences are going to be onsite or on Zoom?
No, no, they, I'm sorry, they will be on Zoom. We're intending to have them on Zoom. And if they're not on Zoom, some teachers may be using Google Meet. But the main point is that we want to make sure that there aren't any technical issues that we had, such as the open house. And so we'll be getting, you know, we'll be getting invitations out to families soon. But it will not be onsite.
Has there been any discussion about when you have outdoor activities, having parent volunteers? I don't know if that's your question for Mr. Parentazi.
I believe that, I believe that your guidelines have said that we could have, we can't have parents inside the building. I don't, I believe it was moot on outside.
Madam Chair, we began the year with the science activities outdoors, so that we were following your guidelines. And then the school committee voted to allow that to go inside.
Right. I'm not asking about extracurricular activities. I'm asking about, you know, historically, parents would volunteer for, you know, field trips or, you know, activities in the classroom. And I know that right now, we're not having, you know, parents or other people inside of the school. But I wondered about volunteering for, because there's a lot of activities that are still happening outside.
I would imagine that if it weren't this time of year, we could have an active conversation about what's going to happen in the next X number of weeks. But as the weather turns the way it is, that certainly is something that Mr. Andrews and I will bring to your attention for the springtime. And hopefully, two things will occur. Number one, the pandemic will be receding so that activities can normalize. And number two, the outdoor activities could, you know, blossom again.
Respectfully, I recognize I wasn't at the last meeting of our, our last school committee meeting. And there may have been discussion at that meeting, but I wonder if at an upcoming meeting sometime soon, we may want to revisit our policy and consider allowing, you know, volunteers to come into the building as long as they're following protocols with hand hygiene and masking. I, I just like to, to raise that topic, unless it's redundant and it was already discussed at the last meeting and I missed it and I'm sorry. At the last meeting, not so much having volunteers coming into the school, but having activities occur in the school. It came up during community correspondence. And I was anticipating just, you know, seeing some discussion on social media that that might come up again today. You know, there were some questions about activities in the school. But it's certainly something that we could discuss now or during new business. I think it's, I would love to know other people's opinions on, on such a matter. Personally, I feel like, you know, society is starting to recognize kind of how to proceed in the era of having COVID-19 as one more illness that's kind of part of the fabric of our lives and how we can continue to operate as normally as possible. You know, with it in existence. And I think we've learned and learned a lot about how to be safe and how to be able to interact with each other in a safe manner. So I would, I would think that whenever we, I don't know, I think that, in my opinion, we know that hand hygiene and masking are critical elements to safe interactions. And if we had those in place, I, I would personally favor being able to provide as much support to our school as possible and, you know, getting volunteers back into the classrooms, helping out our teachers and staff. And, you know, reinvigorating the community-based programming that we've always had. And I think it's been so important to our, to our school. We ultimately only ended up voting upon allowance for the science activities to come indoors because it was a group of students who are already in the school and a limited amount of adults participating. Because we didn't have information about other groups and what they're doing, other schools, other school districts or organizations within Nahann and what they're doing about, you know, their guidelines for indoor activities. So between, so we sort of tabled the discussion for future discussion after gathering more information. And since the last meeting, I was able to reach out to the town of Nahann and their guidelines for indoor meetings in the town hall. You know, if you're going into the town hall, masking is optional. But if you're having a group meeting for a prolonged period of time, they require masks for, you know, regardless of vaccination status. So that seems to be the guidelines for the town of Nahann in a, like a town-owned building. And they didn't have any, you know, guidelines otherwise in terms of, you know, group size, it sounds to be, because those restrictions were lifted from a state standpoint. And I did reach out to the school committee chair from Swamp Scott to see what they were doing in Swamp Scott. And, you know, her, she didn't send me their guidelines. She said that she would and she just hasn't sent them to me yet. But it's on to the, from her quick, you know, response, following similar guidelines. I'm aware of several other towns. And again, not that we should make our decision based on what other people are doing, but just informative wise, you know, I'm aware of several other towns in Massachusetts who are certainly having parent volunteers back in the classrooms to, you know, help with, help teachers and with small group activities, just like we used to do at the Johnson School. So it just, you know, it's been discussed by my colleagues at work and kind of, I hadn't thought about it for a while and it kind of came back to the forefront of my mind, just wanting to bring it up. I don't know of a good, I'm not thinking of a good reason why not right now. So I just thought I'd, I'd bring it up. I agree. Different, you know, levels, we could discuss it, you know, across the board, or we could discuss volunteers coming into the school and allowing groups, you know, from the community and, you know, potentially allowing, I know that historically, groups even from outside of Nahann have used the school building. So, you know, if, if the school committee members would like, we could address it in different ways, or we could discuss it more globally, if that's what's preferred.
Michelle, were you going to say something?
Just to Lauren's point, as somebody who volunteered at the school, I would love to get back and help. I, I love being at the school. I love interacting with everybody there, basically. And I think it's important. And I think the kids enjoy having their parents come in and like, especially some of those things like, you know, mystery reader and kindergarten and, you know, and just in talking about emotional health and physical health to have some normalcy back. And I think, again, to Lauren's point, you know, moving forward with this, you know, we have some mitigation factors in place, such as mask wearing, that people are comfortable with. And, you know, why not open, open it up? You know, being part of recreation outside, but also having recreation indoors and several different sports. I've seen it successfully run and I don't see a problem with doing that, especially with the winter months coming in, where physical activity is limited.
I agree with Michelle.
As do I. I'm with you Lauren and you too Gina. I think it's important for the kids that they resume some more semblance of normalcy.
I agree. I'm with you. Tony, I'm eager to hear what you and Kevin feel.
First of all, we all want to return to normal. All of us do. There's, there's multiple layers of concern. Let me start with why schools, public schools are different than town halls or any other place. The law mandates children come to school. We are held to the highest extent of protective responsibility because the law makes kids come here. We actually report parents who don't send their children to DCF. So that gives us a higher level of responsibility. A, their children and B, they're mandated to be here. Nobody is mandated to play Pop Warner football or recreational basketball. A parent makes that choice. So it's a different level of responsibility that we have. So, you know, with that as a foundation for the dialogue, there's a couple of things to think about. One is, I agree with everything everybody said. We're getting to the point where we have to consider returning to our building being used by the community. Students having more normalization, parents and guardians being able to volunteer, field trips, etc. One of the issues that causes me to hesitate is the problems that schools have when there is a student who is identified as a positive COVID person. And then the close contact survey is done. And all of a sudden, you go from one student who is eliminated from school because they are a positive to X number because the person in charge of an activity didn't hold to the protocol. And then you have X number of kids who can't go to school for days. And then that's on top of the obvious that we want to, we don't want anyone to get sick at any time. So as an administrator, I will administrate your decision. But they are the things that are reeling around in my mind on the, on the, don't open anything up now. What was reeling around on this little quarter of my mind over here, which is basically hollow, is that maybe we should wait to is that maybe we should wait to see what our pediatric vaccination number is, and then target January. If we have a very large number of, of students who choose to, whose parents choose to get them vaccinated, then the math might shift. You know, the, the exposure gen may shift. Because as much as I'd like to say, you're absolutely right about masks, and you're absolutely right about hand washing, we as adults have difficulty with this. Children do. Mr. Andrews has to contact parents occasionally, regularly, at times, about them, a student's inability to keep their mask on appropriately, or their, their inability to keep the space that we are requiring. And, you know, we, so they're, they're just the thoughts rummaging around. But I, I'm 100% let's, you know, even though I'm not on social media regularly, I, I look at it every once in a while, or someone will send me something. I mean, one of the comments is, over the last 12, 12 days, "Let's stop using COVID as an excuse for doing what we want," as if we don't want to open our school and we don't want to have kids and staff without masks on. I mean, I don't even understand comments like that. I mean, this is about children's safety and health. It's not about, you know, Kevin Andrews and Tony Parentazzi enjoy seeing people in masks. I mean.
Well, and currently, that's not your decision, right? That's the decision of Dessie, so.
Right.
That's outside of our hands. But I do want to say that in terms of allowing people to come into the school, you know, if, if they are masked, like you said, education is a requirement. But this choice of people and parents, if they're gonna, if Nahon isn't gonna open up a recreation program or allow people to come here, they're gonna go elsewhere. And currently, we're lucky that our community has a low number and where we're sending our kids out because we don't have community-based programs. I think you're opening, you're preventing your, your that population up. You know, so I, I do think it's a double-edged sword, but I do find it important to allow them to have opportunities in, in Nahon.
Yeah, and, and that's not the issue. If, if the school committee wants Nahon residents and the students of the Johnson Elementary School to have access to the building after hours, as we did at one time, that's one decision. For example, the, the Science Club. That was a perfectly reasonable decision to open it up. But if we talk about basketball, where above a certain grade and above a certain level, we now have our Nahon kids interacting on a relatively intimate basis with students who don't live in Nahon, then where that happens is not as important as it's happening. And so I, I kind of understand the, the concept of it's gonna happen in Swamp Scott and Elementary School. Why not make it more convenient to our students and parents and have it happen here?
Well, I think Michelle's point too is that it's already been happening. And like, you know, a good number of the students who go to school at the Johnson School have been participating in indoor sports for quite a while now. So, you know, not in the hot. And I don't think it's a question of, you know, what's right or wrong. And we're never gonna come to a circumstance where there's a no-risk scenario, right? That doesn't exist in life. We don't get there. Wish we did, but we don't. So then I think reasonable precautions are what we would just need to have in mind and, you know, and be inconsistent. So, you know, if we have a mask-for-all policy at our Johnson Elementary School during the school day, well, that mask-for-all policy would be what we have for extracurricular activities as well, whether it's science or basketball. And if people find that that's uncomfortable, they don't like playing basketball with a mask on, then they don't come to our facility. And I know what you're saying about enforcement, and if it's after hours, you know, our staff isn't there to oversee and enforce, and that would be accurate. There would be some, you know, again, there's some risk we would have to incur by trusting. But I guess we could start small. We could start small tonight by talking about something in a much more controlled way and saying, how do we feel about volunteers in the classroom again? Where that's a circumstance in which it is under the school's control to, you know, follow through with mask protocols and, you know, start with a baby step of, of something like that, which I think if we're talking as a school committee right now, that's probably our, in my opinion, the more direct impact on our students as learners and beginning to foster a community environment again in trying to help out our, our staff, which I, I think, I, I hope I'm not misled. I believe it would be a help for our staff, you know, to have volunteers to come back in and not a stressor. But I know everything right now, every change, whether it's to get back to what was our normal, might feel stressful because any, every change is stressful. But I guess what I'm trying to say is, it seems like that, in my mind, would be priority number one. And then whether or not we want to take on the idea of, of opening our facility to more extracurricular activities could be tier number two, if we chose to take it in a stepwise fashion.
I, I would like to add in response to enforcement. So only based off of having the experience of running the town program for soccer. And, you know, as a program director, I wanted to keep soccer open. So I was very clear with parents, basically, like, if you or your child are not able to follow these policies, don't come. Don't come and ruin the program. And I, and I think that would be the same for anybody who is allowed in the school. And ultimately, if there are people who aren't following policy, the onus would be on the program director to disqualify those particip, from participating.
I agree. I think the same thing happened at baseball, too. There was a big stress that this program would be shut down if we weren't able to comply. And whether or not, you know, people had personally agreed or disagreed with masking, I agree with Michelle, that, you know, people want children to be able to have normal experiences. So I, I agree, you know. And there are some programs where people may be less motivated than others, as far as program directors. But as a community, I think we all have a responsibility to, to speak up and speak up to each other and advocate and, and make it happen. And there's more, there's a good, there's a lot of force for good in this world, right? I think we have to trust it sometimes.
I wonder about, you know, I'm listening, I agree with all of this, and I'm really hearing, you know, what Mr. Parentazzi said about the, you know, the additional potential risk to kids when you add extraneous folks that don't, you know, that aren't mandated to be in the building, in the building. And so one way I wonder about that is, I do like the idea of starting with something small, like mystery readers or volunteers or things like that. And I wonder about mandating that any extra adults are vaccinated and have to do an assestation to come in. My daughter, that's what my daughters high school does. And I, and it's something that we're doing, you know, where if you, kind of similar to what you were saying, Michelle, like, you want to do this, this is, this is the threshold that we need for adults to be at in order to come and be here. And I, that would make it safer for kids if the adults that came into the building were vaccinated. It's not foolproof, and I understand that, but it certainly lowers risk considerably. And, and so then, you know, you want to volunteer, you can do that. And then we can see where we're at. I like the idea of watching pediatric vaccination amounts and kind of evaluate that in December for potentially adding basketball or what have you in terms of external groups, and what requirements we would have for the adults in those groups, you know, starting after the holidays.
Personally, I wouldn't be in favor of requiring that. I feel like it's such a slippery slope. And as you said, that while people may be safer if they're vaccinated in terms of the sickness that they get, I just think that, you know, to put any vaccination mandate on anybody is just not in our wheelhouse. You know, then, then are we discriminating against people because of their religion or, you know, whatever exemption, medical exemptions they might have? I, I, I just, and especially for the children, I, I just, I don't agree with it. I wouldn't be in favor of that.
When it, if, if we ever get to the point where we're talking about, you know, a mask-free environment, I think that might be a different conversation. But if we're talking about, you know, having people enter with COVID precautions, including masks for all, I, I think it would personally be reasonable enough, as long as masking for all is their requirement, then I think we're mitigating our risk very reasonably without requiring vaccination.
Yeah, I, Madam Chair, through you, I totally agree, mask for all. But how, how do you, how do you maintain a three-foot minimum physical distance in sports? You don't.
No, but it's prolonged amounts of time, too. You know, so I think if we, if we start talking about, you know, extracurricular activities, again, that's a different conversation, and we might want to, we might want to have a different set of rules for that. I think if we do just start off with the first chunk being the priority of, I hope, helping teachers and staff and, you know, fostering social, emotional learning for our kids and, you know, all the things that I think a lot of us believe are the benefits of having parents and guardians and other individuals volunteering in the classroom, then maybe we, maybe we start there. Maybe that's the, the easiest first step.
Madam Chair, I would like to get the public health nurse and our school nurse's opinion to help inform the decision, if I may. And then I'm wondering, Mr. Andrews, if we could do an, an informal, anonymous survey of teachers to find out how they feel about it, to inform the decision? Because I, one of the school committee members stated appropriately, if, you know, what's the feeling about it? I hope it's positive, and I, you know, it always has been, but it's different times.
I just had two thoughts regarding volunteers in school specifically. You know, if we were to have volunteers come into the school, you know, which is during a time, to your point, Mr. Parentazzi, that, you know, children need to go to school. It's mandated. But the external, you know, outside of the school, people that will be coming in to volunteer would be at a time when there's gonna be a lot of staff around to ensure that the regulations are being found, followed. So I think considering it really differently than an entire group after school hours and whether or not they're following regulations, it, it'll be much, much, you know, whether volunteers coming into the classroom. And although I would like to hear the staff's opinion, I think at the end of the day, there's probably gonna be some variability and comfort of the staff at the school. And the, you know, this, I think it's, it is helpful information to have, but the staff that are in favor of having volunteers in the classroom and are comfortable with it, following the guidelines that we know work to reduce risk, will welcome in volunteers. And those, I mean, those staff that aren't comfortable having volunteers in the classroom won't invite volunteers, like, the staff are not mandated to have volunteers come in the classroom, COVID or not. You know, there are some teachers that, you know, readily use volunteers, and some teachers over the years that I don't think have ever, you know, reached out to have volunteers in the classroom, so.
I fear sometimes that surveying can make it seem like there's a, like a vote. And even though we want the information, I would hate to, I don't know, I, I feel like if our decision is gonna be made upon, based upon what we know about public health, we know about infection control, and it's a policy, and like Gina's saying, it's not a mandate, you know, that people have volunteers, but we're making policies based upon what we believe and we have learned as state, I think, I don't know that we need the survey.
It could be, just like you said, a, you know, if you want to volunteer, you can advocate for one.
I feel a little differently. I, I, I hear you. I definitely, you know, it's, it's our decision with, on Mr. Parentazzi, Mr. Andrews, and I, you know, we are also representing parents, and I hear, and I, I definitely hear that. And I, I would like to go in and volunteer. But I, I do think, like, similar to the mandate around students needing to come to school, teachers have to come to school. And they have to all work in a school building where, and, and I fight this every day in school, but like, perception and reality sometimes don't match up, you know? And the feelings of fear sometimes are not as great as they should be and greater than they should be, you know, depending on what science is telling us about this thing or anything that's new to us, right? And so, you know, I hear you about the, the medical side of it, but I, just having worked with a lot of teachers all over the map now over the past 18 months, their, their feelings of being able to be safe enough to do their job feel important. And so if a lot of teachers, now, it's probably gonna be fine, but if a lot of teachers kind of were like, "We don't want more adults in the building than have to be right now," I do think that's important for us to know. And if there's no concern about it, I think that there are very minimal concern. I think that that tells us something. And I think you're right, Gina, that there's gonna be variation, but I don't know that it's gonna be like 50/50. I bet it'll trend in one direction or another. And I think as a governing body, I think that's, that's important for us to know with perhaps one of the biggest key constituencies in the school that don't have the same choice as we do about this particular subject, for what it's worth.
I'd like to also, if I could add, that I think it's important to recognize that volunteer, having volunteers in the building is often about a community-building exercise and an engagement exercise for students to make a, you know, to have a change in the day and, and new faces, and that's fantastic. I think it's also important that it's, it is the teacher's working conditions. And so if we have someone who's not vaccinated or not saying that they're gonna be vaccinated, and they're in the, in the building, and they're working closely with people, I think that would, I'd be surprised if we were going to move forward with something such as that because it is a working condition question. And we are aware of one another's vaccination status in the school. So we know who we're working with closely, as it is currently. But to have folks in the building that we don't know about in this time, I don't think would be a, a net positive.
Was that more unvaccinated people because the entire student body?
That's true, that's true. But I, I think that's a diff, I think we look at that a little bit differently. And, you know, I think, I do think we look at that a little bit differently.
There's a lot of fear. I mean, it's really obvious that there's a lot of fear. And, you know, it's easier to stay where we are than to change. Yeah, I'm just really struggling because I, I think that if the decisions are made based upon fear and not scientific fact, that it's gonna be a long time until we see change happening. And, and I don't know that that's the right choice.
I think we've worked hard to make our decisions based upon scientific fact and not on emotion. And I think we could have made a lot of decisions differently over the past two years if we operated, if I personally operated out of my own emotion and not what I learned as fact. So I, I just want to make sure that, you know, I personally am gonna continue to try to make decisions based upon data and scientific knowledge, acknowledging that it's difficult for everyone emotionally. It's, it's tough. Nothing here has been easy.
One more point is, a, a Saturday night basketball league would affect the students involved in that Saturday night basketball league. So I think that's a completely different question than. than uh, who's coming to the school.
Right, right. That there are different yeah, groups and it's different situations and that they should be addressed differently as opposed to universally. Um, but, I mean, regarding volunteers coming in the school, my opinion is it's safe because we know that with the guidelines we have in place, it's safe for um, people who are vaccinated or unvaccinated to remain safe. And we know that based upon unvaccinated, because as Michelle said, all of our students have been unvaccinated and, and school transmission has been non-existent. Um, I don't know that, um, there would be any additional information that would significantly sway my decision because, um, you know, the, the staff don't need to, you know, invite volunteers into the, uh, school. Uh, that would be up to anybody in the school to, you know, decide if they feel comfortable having a volunteer coming into their classroom. So we're not you know, in that way changing the outdated, you know, working environment. Um, but, you know, I'm open to the rest of the committee's opinion as to if you would prefer to hear more information and decide on this at a future meeting.
So I'm sorry, to table it and so we get more information from, um, Tony had suggested, um, we turn now to the public health nurse, or is that?
I don't think that I need more information because I'm familiar with public health guidelines and the guidelines that are effective and, uh, you know, reducing risk of transmission. And I think if we follow these guidelines, it would be a safe move. I also am acknowledging that hearing from the conversation that it'd be unlikely that teachers would use volunteers based upon the feedback that we're getting. So this may all be for not. Um, it sounds like we need to maybe have further discussion about, you know, outside groups, um, at a future meetings, uh, because although, uh, to your point, Tony, um, you know, having a, having a group meeting where everybody's masked and, you know, several feet apart is obviously different than how they're managing sports. I know that they're managing sports lots of different places, you know, um, and, and, but, yeah, what?
And they did during COVID too, like, you know, yeah, there were so many guidelines that, you know, everybody had to follow indoor, outdoor, um, cohorts, like all of that and, you know, still successful.
Um, not exactly sure where we're at right now, what we're deciding. Um, it, I, I think I want to take a step back and just say like, this is a school, I mean, the school system did, you know, before my time on the school committee, make the decision to follow science and keep the school open during a year that m- most schools closed. And, um, and that was a, you know, like, that's a bold move, following science. I, and I, and one I'm deeply grateful for and a real, you know, I think a real model for its, um, staff and us and, and what have you. So like, I don't know, given that and that, you know, we're just starting student vaccinations right now, um, in elementary school. Um, we don't know how many of our students will be vaccinated in the next like month or so. Um, and from what we've heard from our leadership here, that it, the appetite isn't huge to do this right now. Um, I, I don't know.
If I can, can I jump back in for one minute? Um, uh, you know, I, I don't want to misrepresent anything. I mean, we, we, we really love working with the parents. We love working with the families. We love having the community connection. It makes it exciting. Um, and I think what I was just trying to say is that, you know, we, I think we, like last year was so strange. This year, we're kind of on our feet. Uh, now students are getting vaccinated and it is, like you said, everything that we change is like a process and that's something to think about. And where's the vaccination card gonna go and who's gonna keep the list and who's the volunteer and, you know, what are we looking for? So I think that's just the framework we want to have around it is that we just, we, we're just starting to catch our breath, I think. Um, and that's, that's just what I want to put out there and, and, you know, we're up for, you know, we have, I think, thank you, Ms. Anderson, for recognizing that we were one of eight percent of the schools that were open. Um, that was wonderful that we were able to do that, or maybe it was fifteen by later in the year. Um, but, you know, I just want to put that frame around it. That, that's all. And to catch that, you know, that, that feeling.
Yeah, I'm not hearing anybody say no. I'm hearing caution, right? That's all. I'm hearing caution, not just from you. I'm hearing some caution and some of the questions and ideas that Mr. Parentozzi had. And I'm just gonna, you know, be blunt, is this the hill we want to die on right now? Like, I don't, I, for me, it's not, right? I think like, I, I think it's beautiful to volunteer. I'm a mom. I've got two kids in. I want to volunteer. You want to volunteer. I hear the school wants us to volunteer. I think we got some things to figure out before we get there, based on some of the caution. And I, I don't, you know, and I want to, you know, like, I hear you, Lauren, on the science and I, this is funny because this is the bell that I'm ringing in my professional life all the time. But I've learned a lot about what, you know, like, science is only as good as the information and communication around it. You know, if you wanted to get out into the sauce. And so I, I think, you know, I just, I think that you gotta figure out like what the most important things are right now. And I'm not sure that this, this is it for this point in time. It, it might, you know, it might be better to pull up at another meeting when at least we know a little bit more about how many of our kids are vaccinated.
I, I'm willing, uh, you know, whatever the rest of the committee wants to do, obviously is perfectly fine. I think that the reason I bring it up is that I guess the hill that I want to die on is that we continue to follow science and, um, and I, I get hesitant when I feel, when I feel like we might not follow science because of fear. And I, it's, so it's not, um, it's not out of a lack of empathy or a lack of recognition that, you know, it, this has been incredibly hard. Everything everyone's gone through has been incredibly hard. And I'm, I'm hoping life gets nothing but easier going forward, but I think the only way to make it easier is to, is to trust the science that we do have and then be able to, you know, liberate ourselves where we can. Um, so I, I bring it up for that reason, um, you know, not to create drama or problems or stress, but, um, I don't want to do that at all. But I fear that we create more drama or problems or stress when we don't consistently follow science and the facts. Um, and so that, I guess, if, if we have a policy that to me doesn't make sense based upon what we know about epidemiology and, and public health right now, then I, I get uncomfortable. I think that that's where I'm coming from. And, uh, if it makes more sense for everyone to kind of mull it over and we could talk about it again in the future, that's great. And I, I thank you for humoring me, bringing it up out of order right now on our agenda. So, uh, I just kind of thought of it when Principal Andrews was talking about the wonderful things going on. And, you know, the running club and volunteers outside of school and the things that have been happening, it just kind of inspired me. Think, oh my goodness, like, why not? Why not get a little bit more, um, help, you know, into the school? So whatever everyone else feels is, is lovely. I just appreciate at least considering it sooner than later.
Madam Chair, um, I understand the focus on volunteers in the school and how that makes sense because it's in a more controlled environment and it would be at seven o'clock at night with a sports team. But it also leads me to question if we're gonna let volunteers in the school in a classroom, shouldn't parents be able to come into the school to have a conference with their student teacher? I mean, it's not, see, I don't see it that tightly.
I, I, I see what you're saying. I, yes, what you're saying is what I would say. I think the, the rule's the same, um, for adults coming into the school during the school day. Um, it wouldn't just be for volunteers. It would be for all of that. And I would see the stuff as separate if, if we need to.
Yeah, and, and if I would urge more thought and tabling this and bringing it up at our next meeting, it would be because of that. I want to think, I want to think with you which activities and which, um, entering the school in what capacity is exactly the same.
Okay.
And say yes to all those things that we perceive to be basically the same. Not, and, and not miss any.
Okay.
Because basically now we've been saying, parents can't come in, you know, and, and if we're gonna get volunteers in a classroom with a whole bunch of kids and three adults, then we probably should open it up in other ways and, you know, and, and sitting right here, right now, I, I can't really focus enough to, to like make that list. But I think normalization is our goal and science is our guide.
Well said, Tony.
Thank you.
The next meeting, do you think you could get a list of activities that parents would historically come into the school for, so we could discuss that at the next meeting and we'll put it on the agenda?
And I'd like to say, um, I would like to say, um, adults, um, just, you know, presenters, you know, we want to think about, you know, who, who comes into the school? Like right now, we're not doing any in-person presenters.
Right.
Uh, we're doing remote, so.
Great to incorporate all of that and just look at, I think the same rule applies to all, so that would be great.
Also, we haven't been getting on a bus and going field trips. I, maybe if, you know, maybe we should rethink that.
Well, especially where our middle school and high school kids from our district pop on a bus and go to school every day. You know, it's like, we should be consistent, I think, you know, if, if that's okay, then something else is okay. If it's the same, I don't know. I, I think, again, good for the next agenda. I don't.
That's exactly where my brain was.
Yeah, I'm with you.
If it's good here, it's, it needs to be good here, here, here.
Yeah.
And, um, the issue I have with the busing issue is, you know, when the weather's good and the windows are all open, it's a, you know, if we have all the kids close the windows, is that going to make a difference? I don't know. I, I'm not saying it is. I'm saying, um, my gut tells me it's not. If everybody has a mask on and everybody's facing the same way, uh, I don't think it's gonna matter, but I, you know, I just want to think about that. Cause I, I mean, I want our kids to get out there and they're two, I mean, before COVID hit, we had a a rigorous and vigorous, uh, activity for our students all around. Uh, I, you know, I want to go to the Coast Guard station again with the kids in, in Boston. It was a phenomenal field trip.
Yeah. Well, this is, this is good to start talking about.
Yeah. And I think our staff can help, you know, if we have more time, we can put it out to the staff and get their feedback. Not on yes or no, that's your decision. But on, you know, the, the permutations, you know, the more minds we get thinking about it, the better the result will be.
Um, so on that note, we can move on to public comment, correspondence and community input. Um, I don't see any community members on the call, but, um, if anybody from the committee has had any community correspondence, they could please share it now. I haven't had any direct correspondence, just in indirect conversation that I alluded to. Last came in.
I'll, I'll hold my comment on the social media I reviewed.
Right, um, so we can move on actually to new business. Mr. Brandozzi.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Uh, last meeting, you asked for the ESER three community survey that was done at the end of October. And it's in your packet.
Yeah.
The most, um, I would say, other than the individual comments, the data is, um, not strongly conclusive, conclusive. Uh, but the important thing to note is that um, the staff, the administrative staff had to choose the methodology of expenditure for, for ESER. Uh, but it all, but it can be changed. We, we have to write a plan and it's just that, it's a plan in order to qualify for the funds. And those deadlines, um, as you can well imagine, are not long. You know, typically they're two to three weeks, so, um, but we can change anything, um, that the school committee chooses. Uh, I, I shared with you the, uh, the ESER, um, budgets last time. So now you have the survey and the budgets, so.
Mr. Parentozzi, I just have a question on the, um, survey results on the graph. I just want to be sure that there, I don't know how they were done, if they were manually, but just on the first graph, the strongly agrees in blue and the strongly disagrees in purple. And then it flipped on the, the graph below. So I guess it just, everything else was the same except those two. So I wasn't sure. Um, what was represented in?
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Let me scan to that. Um, I, I can take that superintendent and Madam Chair.
Yeah, please do.
The, the colors were randomly, I believe, were, they were just picked by Google.
Oh.
Yeah, so I, I didn't, I didn't actually edit them. Um, I, I read them and interpreted them, but um, they were just picked by Google.
Okay.
You know, I think in looking through this, um, after the last meeting, there are a lot of these items that we've already, you know, discussed and addressed or working on addressing, so. Um, I don't know that there was anything significant that jumped out at me that were totally off the mark and making sure to advocate for in our funding upcoming. I mean, especially between the, um, programs that were put on this summer and the additional support, you know, for students. Um, as well as, you know, support for the staff and the, um, emotional side of it and, you know, stress and anxiety and addressing stress and anxiety for staff and students. And the upcoming programming, I think that a lot of the, uh, particularly a lot of the comments, um, you know, have already been addressed, so. Thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank Mr. Andrews. He's the, uh, survey guru. And if, uh, you know, you've only had a couple of days to look at this, so if you want to review it and uh, if you have any thoughts, uh, my thoughts are, um, you know, if you look at the, the two pie graphs, um, student support is the concept that I keep coming back to. A lot of parents and guardians and community members think we need to support um, our students so that they recover loss of instruction. I, I hesitate to say this, but it's in my head. We are the beneficiaries of probably less loss of instruction than anyone other than the other eight percent of the school districts. So I can only imagine what parents, guardians and students are thinking and feeling elsewhere. And I empathize with that. That doesn't minimize our obligation to continue to strive to catch up. But our students have less deprivation than most. Um, and, and that's, that's a good thing. And, uh, I, I, I point to the school committee, uh, for your guidance, uh, using science uh, to, to guide the school district during these times and, uh, and the, um, the benefits we have of being a small school with space. Uh, and, uh, and those two things really, you know, came together and allowed us to, to do what we did. But, uh, you know, my job before this one was in an urban district of thousands of students with no space, so I empathize with the school districts that are dealing with that.
My thought is just to keep this in perspective. Just to keep this in perspective, you know, as we're moving forward and, and making future decisions is another set of information that can help guide us.
Thank you. Madam Chair, with your permission, I respectfully request that you table item eight B for the following reasons. Number one, I'm finishing my, uh, application for a voucher system which would address this. Uh, I have an application for, um, free and reduced lunch in the works, which would negate the need for a specialized vote. And, uh, I have already authorized the reduction of cost for, um, individuals and families of, for the lunch bunch. Because, um, that program runs in a manner in which there is more of an opportunity to alleviate the ne- the negative factors, uh, from families who need to have it.
Do you want to move on to the Island Roots, uh, personnel change?
Madam Chair, I would be happy to. In your packet, you have an item labeled eight C. That item is a, um, is an email that I got from, uh, Ms. Stevens, the executive director of Island. I always want to say I own packet. Anybody know what that means? It's a, it's a, it's a, one of the best sailboats in the world. Island Roots. And, uh, this just informs us that Paul, who is a marvelous director here at the Johnson School, has chosen to take a job closer to his home. And, uh, this gives the Ms. Stevens, uh, transition plan. And I, I, I speak to, uh, Paul basically every day that I'm here. And, uh, he's doing a great job of, of the transition, you know, setting up his, his leaving and the transition. So I'm, uh, very optimistic that there would be a minimal disruption to our students and their parents.
Want to add as a parent who has a child in that program, like how how much he is enjoying it. And it's such a great and well-run so pleased that we had this option. And so thank you for all your efforts in making that happen.
A.J. Cronin, uh, the, the great poet and author has an interesting perception on life not being an open highway, but being a closed alley, uh, in which often many doors are opened. And oftentimes the, the best doors that we have are opened by others.
Right.
This is one of those classic cases of because we had an issue, we made a decision and it turns out to be phenomenal, just phenomenal.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Andrew. Thank you, Mr. Parentozzi.
It's a great solve. My sons are in it too. They love it.
Yeah.
Great to hear it.
Yeah, me too. Nothing but positive feedback for me too.
They asked if they could go on the weekend.
He doesn't, he doesn't want, he's like, why did you pick me early? I'm like, I'm back.
That's about the highest compliment you could ever get in an educational environment. Can I go to school on Saturday?
So, uh, moving on, I think, oh, do you have any other personnel matters?
I do, Madam Chair. Um, I'm pleased to note that, uh, we are trying to set up an applicant interview for our team chair position, which came, uh, to, to be very late today. And our special education team chair.
Team chair.
Team chair. Uh, yes, our current team chair would like to leave, uh, right around the turn of the, uh, new year, the calendar year. Uh, unfortunately, our OT specialist who has been with us for years, Ms. Bergman, uh, has resi- has, uh, tendered her resignation just about the same time. So we will be looking for an, an occupational therapist. That's, uh, and we're looking at it in three different ways. Uh, I had a meeting with, uh, Mr. Andrews and Ms. DeGuardia today about it. We're looking at hiring, uh, a team chair and an occupational therapist, or the possibility that we could find a superwoman or Superman who could do both of those things. And, uh, all three are on the table. Uh, however, if, if the person that we're going to be interviewing next week is a viable candidate for the team chair position, then that limits, uh, us to, uh, because we, we don't want to not hire somebody because of a possibility. So what that means is that we we may be looking at a, a special education provider for our occupational therapy. Couple issues with that. Number one, it's usually dramatically more expensive. And number two, the personnel in the providers tend to change fairly rapidly. So we'll, but if we have to do it, we will. Other than that, all of our positions are full. Everyone's doing well. Our new staff members are, are really, um, enjoying their time here. I, I speak with them, uh, at least weekly, hopefully every day. And, uh, they seem to be having a really good time. The interview teams and Mr. Andrews did a phenomenal job of hiring.
Um, do any school committee members have any business? If any other business. Seeing no other business, could somebody make a motion to dismiss two executive session?
Happy to make a motion to adjourn our meeting, our open meeting for November sixteenth at nine eleven P M. To enter into executive session. Not to reconvene to open session for the purpose of approval of executive session minutes from October twenty-sixth and to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with union personnel.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Ms. Karis, Ms. Sherlock, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Dan, myself. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, folks.